All right, I will tell you when I see it. I see it. You are good to go.
Okay. There. All right, you guys ready to roll?
Yep.
We're live with YouTube.
Yes, we are.
Okey doke. So my name is Mike Chapina. I'm a school board member and the chair of the athletics committee. I am conducting tonight's meeting along with my committee members. Don Hadley, who's a volunteer from the community, has been on athletics committee, I think, longer than I have. And Mr. Hunter Ahrens, who's a school board member, who also represents the athletics committee. Staff to the committee, if you will, is Tom Legath, who's the athletic director here in Exeter. He will be joining us tonight as well as a number of other board members and administrators. We normally, a committee meeting runs a little bit differently than an actual school board meeting. There's more conversation, give and take, given where we are at this point with our remote and virtual approach to meetings. We did solicit comments and or questions to Mr. Legath. And what we're going to do is ask Mr. Legath at this point to share any of the public comments or questions that you may have received via email.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chapina. The first question tonight is from Frank Quigley at thirty-five Pickwick Place. And his question reads, "Mr. Legath, I would like to express an opinion concern in regards to spectator attendance at sporting events. I am a parent of a fourth grade and sixth grader in the Exeter School District. I am also a practicing physician who does have direct care for COVID patients. I can certainly understand frustrations that surround both school and athletic events. I do, however, have serious concerns about proceeding with athletics in a typical fashion. I believe it is paramount that as we consider proceeding with sports that we also insist on limitations in who can attend sporting events. This practice will help to mitigate further spread of the virus. I cannot predict what the future will hold. I hope, as all parents, that this will be over soon. I also hope that the board considers the safety of the community as decisions are made." Frank Quigley.
Thank you.
The next question. This is from Joe Strauss at twenty-one Bowes Lane. And please, this is very long. "Thank you to our athletic committee for revisiting the important topic of spectators at sporting events. I am writing in support of creating safe and reasonable occupancy standards for all sporting events at the Exeter Township School District. I realize there will be differing and opposing opinions on this topic, and I see compromise as the optimal solution. My support for increased occupancy at sporting events includes the development of an orderly, structured plan that recognizes the importance of maintaining a safe, healthy, and a secure environment for all attendees, staff, coaches, and our athletes. Exeter is fortunate to offer large-scale facilities and venues that can safely accommodate a much higher number of spectators than the current guidance from our governor. The governor's guidance on this topic is not logical, especially since it does not take into account the size and scope of venue or other protocols that can be put in place to minimize and eliminate risk of this virus. This cannot be one-size-fits-all solution or decision. It didn't take long for the Wilson School Board to apply simple mathematics in leading them to find a solution that complies with universal CDC guidance surrounding social distancing and the personal protection of doning face masks. Adding things like temperature checks and a pre-screening questionnaire regarding spectator symptoms and risk of previous exposure would only further improve a structured plan to permit an increased number of fans to attend these events in a safe and healthy manner. Spectators have always presented risks at these events even prior to this pandemic. To think that every spectator will follow PPE rules 100% of the time would be wishful thinking. Rules must be clearly communicated, and breaking rules need to have strict consequences. Under a well-designed plan, my expectation is that attendance at sporting events will be organized and controlled by the school's administration and the law enforcement if needed. In my view, occupancy will continue to be limited, but by the composition of those attending will be family members of athletes or family of other students supporting spirit activities. The gates would not be open to random students, residents, or visitors. This will minimize security issues and health risk. I encourage the athletic committee to explore the many options available to increase occupancy of spectators at both outdoor and indoor sporting events. Items to consider may include, but not be limited to the following. Number one, increase the number of seats available inside the venue while recognizing six feet social distancing. Number two, require face masks when not able to maintain six feet social distancing. Number three, permit spectators to remove masks when seated and maintaining at least six feet from another person. Number four, consider grouping families together in pods similar to eating at a restaurant. No mask required whilst sedatory and in your pod. Social distancing of six feet can be relieved under this arrangement, and it would allow for greater occupancy. Number five, for events outside, permit spectators in places like The Hill and surrounding vantage points to observe the contest. Number six, add temperature checks and healthy questionnaire prior to entry. Number seven, develop selection criteria for entry and implement a pre-registration, application, and approval process, i.e. number of parents or family members of athlete or other spirit student, number of visiting parents permitted, number of student body seats. Number eight, organize entry and aggress by sections or waves to minimize face-to-face contact. Number nine, treat indoor events similarly to outdoor events in determining occupancy for spectators. Number ten, supply hand sanitizer at the entrance to each venue. To make this work, we may need to see some sacrifices like limiting mobility at the venue. Introduce a rotational pep band to the stands during the games instead of a full band. No visiting marching bands, limit concessions. I'm confident our school district can make this work with the appropriate planning and preparation by those athletic committee members dedicated to ensuring Exeter Athletics remains a model for our community and PA Sports. Thank you.
Tom, thanks for sharing those, and thank you to Dr. Quigley and to Mr. Strauss for their comments. The committee and the school board appreciates them taking the time to write to us and to share their thoughts. I would say that on both ends, many of the issues that were raised, we have had discussed, have actually been implemented into a number of our plans. Dr. Quigley, I'm sure working in a hospital setting is subjected to CDC and DOH guidelines, and those are the exact same guidelines that we've put in place for our practices at this point. And we certainly will not be doing anything in a typical fashion in the coming year. And I know that Mr. Strauss's comments reflect very significantly a lot of the things that were put into our health and safety plan already. So we have two issues tonight to talk about. One is spectators, and then the second is how we might make our games available to the people that would not necessarily be able to make it into one of our venues. So let me start off by addressing the spectator issue. You know, I don't know if anybody watches Netflix, but you know, watching the governor, the PIAAA and the BCIAA is sort of like watching Cobra Kai right now. You know, it is like this sort of show that you just can't put down because every time you turn away from a second, it's just, you know, something explodes and becomes different or whatever. It's been, it's been a true soap opera to see what is, what's occurring here. And we, right up until midday today, we still have other advice coming out to us around what we can or can't do. This coming from, the latest coming from the BCIAA. I think it's my sense that what we want to do, Mr. Legath, is we, at this point, what we know, the PIAAA has provided us with their advice. The governor has offered guidelines, and the Pennsylvania State Senate has taken action on a bill that actually amends the school code around attendees at sporting events for high school. That is still in the legislative process. And at this point, while it is sitting on the governor's desk, the advice and guidance that the district is working under at this point is that provided by the governor. It is highly likely that if the governor takes no action on the bill that's on his desk, then it, in effect, becomes part of the nineteen forty-nine school code. If the governor takes action and vetoes the House Bill twenty-seven eighty-seven, there's the thought that there's, it's a veto-proof bill, so to speak, and the legislature will override the governor, which at that point, it becomes part of school code and probably requires us to have a further discussion, perhaps nine or 10 days down the line as we wrestle with those new parameters or guidelines. So with that sort of summary, Mr. Legath, can you explain to the group if we were to comply with the PIAAA guidelines, which are, I'm sorry, with the governor's guidelines, which is essentially what the school district has been following to this point? What impact that would have on our boys and girls soccer, girls' field hockey, football? And I would say water polo, but I know that water polo has no home events this year. We, so that, so that that's really sort of a non-issue at this point.
Yes, I can. Thank you. So right now, where we stand with the two-hundred-and-fifty-person limit outside and the twenty-five-person limit inside, it makes it very difficult for an inside event of volleyball to have any spectators at all, given that the number of players that are in a gym would be at least at twenty-five, given officials, given game worker personnel. It was even at one of our current AD meetings, the opinion to have the athletic trainer and the athletic director, game manager, out in the hallway, so they wouldn't even be able to be in the gym under our current guidelines. And then outside of two-fifty, with, you know, numerous junior high sports, junior high field hockey, junior high boys and girls soccer, cross-country, there could be leeway in terms of not having attendance, but not hitting that two-hundred-and-fifty number outside. When you get to the stadium and you have two-hundred-and-fifty, and we'll take football, so about thirty minutes ago, I was on the phone with the Hemfield Athletic Director, which is our first home football game next Friday, September eighteenth. And I asked him how many, approximately how many members of his football team, including their trainers and their coaches and their kids, and his number was at about eighty-five. And then you take our football staff, our football team with the staff that needs to be there and the officials and our cheerleading and our band, and round numbers, you have about fifty, you have about fifty people left. That would not, we'd be about two-hundred, so there'd be fifty people that possibly could come in the stadium. And then as BCIAAA group, looking at field hockey, boys and girls soccer in the stadium, there's, there's talks going on, nothing is confirmed yet, that there would be vouchers given, approximate, you know, to fifty vouchers for the visiting team and eighty vouchers for the home team, that would be like tickets to come into contests to be spectators, because all of those numbers include the players that are on the field currently.
So just a quick question, Tom. Have any, you know, I played college football, and we had home and travel teams. Have any of the high schools given consideration to a travel team, which would, in effect, would take eighty-five members, say, down to fifty? Or athletes skinny down to a travel team to allow for a bit more presence?
Early on, early, early on in the summer, those talks were happening with the PIAAA and District Three. And as time has gone on, it has gone away from that because, you know, these kids practice every day, and they're with the team, and they're part of the team, and they should be part of the team. So as of right now, there's, there's no talks about having just a travel team.
Okay. I mean, college, college athletes participate with the team or part of the team as well. They just aren't good enough to make it to that level, or they might be freshmen or sophomores who don't really play. But, you know, if that, I mean, that would be one way to have fewer people and the opportunity to perhaps bring more people in. So then that, so that is, what you've talked about is the stadium. But when you talk about Herbine or some of the other fields, we're now talking about, there's not a demarcation between the playing field or the observation area and general public area or space. I mean, Herbine sits right on, right on Dunham. So, you know, somebody can park there on the street and, you know, get out of their car and watch the game. So, and as far as the high school football would go, again, we run into issues around whether or not we can enforce anything outside the perimeters of our field. So for instance, the hill outside of the stadium between the junior high and the stadium is open space. So, pardon me.
Mike, I don't think it's open space, it's on the campus.
Pardon me?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, the hill is an open space, it's part of the campus, and it falls under the guidelines of all the things that are covered on the campus. So you can enforce whatever you want up there.
Well, you can, you can put a regulation into place. Enforcement becomes another matter. And that's some of the discussion that we had, is that who, who, who has that responsibility to do enforcement? You know, do, do you, I mean, are, we are under the impression, Don, from the information that Dr. Minor got from the chief of police in Exeter, that the district attorney has advised him that law enforcement should not be, you know, responding to or enforcing masking or social distancing guidelines. So, you know, the challenge is, is that in putting people or, you know, putting people in that space, who manages that? And what happens when you, when you attempt to manage that and you don't get compliance? You know, I use examples, a lot of, I oversee security at the hospital at St. Joe's, and we often run into issues where we, we have a rule and a policy, which is one thing, but not everybody abides by them, and then you, then you get into an enforcement action in some way, shape, or form. And so that's, I think, part of the question here, is how would we manage or handle that? So, so that's where we are. I mean, we've, we've talked about a couple of different options. So, you know, that, sure.
May I, I just wanted to clarify from my conversation with, with Chief Morris, that although the DA is not having the police enforce masking or crowd control or social distancing, the police would enforce any trespassing on private property that, you know, that the district would deem was happening and, and support, you know, the dispersment of people if we consider them to be trespassing.
Right. So I guess the question, you know, becomes, you know, and that's, I appreciate you talking to him because that's, in effect, how we work at the hospital, when we properly post items, it gives you the ability to do some enforcement, that if it wasn't properly signed, you wouldn't be able to do that. But, um, so, so from what, so, so part of the question becomes, do we make that space available? With the caveat that you are masked, families stay together, and groups that are not homogeneous are separated by six feet. Is that an option? And, you know, part of, part of this, Don, you're absolutely right, it becomes an enforcement issue. And, you know, look, I would simply say, if we have people that decide they don't want to follow the rules, we'll stop the game. I won't kick them out, I'll stop the game.
May I just ask for a point of clarity? In terms of, and maybe this is clarity for, for Mr. Katz. In terms of the singular event of the football game, is that inclusive of the hill in this circumstance, in the two-fifty as well as the stadium? Or is it, if they're watching it, or is it separate and distinct spaces? So that if we had two-fifty in the stadium, whatever happened on the hill was irrelevant to that? Not really clear on what constitutes an event and the space around an event.
It isn't clear, and in the, the, I think, that I sent out, there is a question about whether, when you look at the definition of gathering, in the, in the FAQs from the Department of Health, you could make an argument that a gathering, a grouping of people on the hill constitutes a gathering, I mean, under that definition. And it, I think it would be either it's not a gathering, or it is a separate gathering, separate from the stadium. So you could have the two-hundred-and-fifty maximum in the stadium. And potentially, if it's not, if the hill's not viewed as a gathering for the purpose of the limit, then you, you wouldn't have any cap on the number of people. But in any of them, even if it is viewed as a gathering, that's something that you would have to have a conversation, I think, with the Department of Health about. I think it would be a separate gathering, in quotes, so that you could have up to two-hundred-and-fifty people there.
So perhaps that's a next step for us, but, you know, I, I know I've talked to the board previously. I mean, I, you know, would like to see if there is a possibility that in compliance with whatever we need to comply with, if we can get, you know, spectators into the stadium. And then, Mr. Legath, we'd have to talk about, you know, to me, where we are right now, it would be important that those people within the facility who are students, who are actively involved in the event in some way, shape, or form, regardless of locale, particularly as it relates to high school events, that the priority would be for senior participants to have, you know, a family or a representative or somebody who might be able to attend on their behalf. That gets a little, certainly gets tight when you look at the number of participants. I don't know what our senior breakup is, but, you know, it would seem to me that that might be a more fair approach at this point, given what we're trying to deal with. I understand that we're not inviting at most schools, and maybe you could share this with a group of to what some other schools are doing, but it's my understanding that most schools are not inviting visitors within the confines of their, their game facility. So no, no visiting bands, no visiting cheerleaders, no visitors, just the opponent.
That, that is correct. Well, that's correct. Nothing's approved yet, but that's for, that's for football. So, so typically in a football game, a cheerleader, cheerleaders and the band would go to away football games and visitors. And again, speaking to the Hemfield Athletic Director, he informed me that, that they are looking at no visitors in their stadium. But then, on the other hand, we have a scrimmage, a football scrimmage on Friday at, well, we had a, we had a girls' soccer scrimmage actually currently going on right now at Palmyra. And the Palmyra Athletic Director reached out to me earlier in the week and asked me to give two tickets to each of the JV players and varsity players for their parents, because he felt, talking to his parents and the amount of kids on the teams, that they would be under the two-fifty limit in their stadium. We have a football scrimmage tomorrow night at Cedar Crest and the AD there, which is in the same county as Hemfield, Lancaster-Lebanon County. Hemfield's not allowing visitors, but Cedar Crest is allowing one parent for us to end, to come to the game. And they're also allowing people outside of the stadium. So again, everyone is different. And that's where it gets a little difficult making decisions with not some consistency across the board. But given what we're working with, I feel like everyone's trying their best to be flexible and also focus on getting parents of the kids into the stadium with what, with what you can.
So do you, what other challenges do you foresee for any of our athletic events? Again, presuming that at this point, the intent of the board is to be compliant. And I don't think anybody's suggesting that we be non-compliant with the governor at this point. I am waiting to see what happens with HB twenty-seven eighty-seven, but nobody's suggesting that we work outside of that. We will, if the governor doesn't take action, and then there's an action by the Senate, we're going to be under governor guidance till, I think, next Saturday. Is that correct?
I guess that's the ten days, yes.
So do you see other issues, foresee other issues or challenges within our facilities? Because, I mean, this really gets to be then a game management challenge. If you're going to bring people, I mean, first of all, it gets to get, it really is a huge communications challenge, right? Because you have to make sure that any visiting team clearly knows that we're not inviting visitors, fans to our games. So that's going to be incumbent upon their, that school district to, you know, make sure that happens. One of my concerns and one of my challenges, obviously, is, and it's come to us through the grapevine, this was not in Exeter, but we did hear from somebody at another school district in Berks who said, "I'm coming. Has the police have to arrest me? They can arrest me." Okay, so I think, you know, that is something we want to avoid to the extent that we can, which is going to require a huge communications issue with the visiting team. But we also have to have a fairly ironclad process for what we're going to do, whether it's within the facility or on the hill. And I guess I would even ask Ellis, since he's on the call, if, if the hill gathering is technically a separate gathering, is that still a separate gathering within a piece of property over which we have legal control? And would we be, would we be And would we be, would we be required to do a, I, I don't, I keep saying enforcement, but, uh, regulations around the use of that property?
So the answer is, I, I don't know exactly what piece of property we're talking about. By assumption is it is in fact, school district property. And, and if it is, it's my belief that you would need to, for lack of a better word, police the property. So if you've got specific guidelines within your health and safety plan or other policies that relate to, uh, visitors on school premises and with regard to, uh, requirements under guidance from the Department of Health and the Governor's Office under the pandemic, that to ensure that your liability issues are, are protected, you should take all reasonable steps to ensure that people are complying. Mike, as you pointed out earlier, there may come a point where somebody says, um, I'm not going to do what, you know, you have to wear the mask. I'm not wearing the mask. At that point, you have a decision to make about whether you treat that person then as a trespasser for failure to comply. And then it sounds like in that scenario, the police will then participate in removing that individual from your property.
I mean, I, I'm not kidding, Ellis. I would, I would stop the game. I, I, I think, you know, I know that would piss a lot of people off, but you know, people want to go, you know, people are clamoring to be able to see their, you know, person participate in whatever aspect of the game they're participating in. In order to have compliance and for that to be pulled off, I mean, you know, that they go hand in glove. I know it's extreme to say I would shut down the game, but I would shut down the game.
So I, I guess I would turn to Tom and then say, make sure that i- if that's, if that ultimately becomes, um, an option that the district would consider, then I'm assuming you under, you know what PIA rules would be with regard to, how you shut a game down, what the effect of that would be, what the impact on the
We'd forfeit it, I guess.
Yeah, I would assume, but I don't know. I don't know how PIA would operate.
Tom's getting dyspeptic there. So why don't you weigh in?
Which one? Me or, or Legath?
Campbell at this point.
I'll, I'll, I'll comment. Yeah. It's, and it's, it's good to hear all the conversation. And, um, I, I guess I'll sort of give a slightly broader view and then we can, you can take parts of it as you wish. Like, I think that having parents and spectators at these games are important. What's more important is having our athletes play their games. And what's even more important than that, and what is on my minds first and foremost as a principle is getting our kids back into schools. So, and I know that's everybody's priority. So that's sort of the lens that I'm looking through all of this from. And, uh, I think through that, and it's been, it's been great to hear everybody talking about the importance of making sure that we're following the law and following Department of Health guidelines. I think the points about communication are really clear. And, and I think the, the concerns I have lie around the hill and like masks are easy. Either you're wearing one or you're not. Uh, six feet's kind of easy too, because you can see it's six feet or it's not. Granted, people move and that makes it hard when you have to call someone over to enforce it. I think the challenge is going to be numbers. The, the hill is not a place that you can ticket. It's not, you can enter it from many sides. It would be very difficult to maintain a count and, and I worry about that. Inside the stadium is very black and white. You're either inside the stadium or you're not inside the stadium. And we have a lot of control over access and we have a lot of control once we're inside. So yes, yeah. Mr. Japine, if you saw me getting nervous about that and nervous about forfeiting a game, I worry about that because going back to our priorities, if our athletes, if our athletes are the priority, why would we let the spectators forfeit the game for our athletes?
And that's a rhetorical question that we should ask the spectators.
Well, and I guess I, I get what you're saying and, and that deserves some discussion whether we're ready to, and, and because not all the spectators are there for our kids.
I, I totally agree with you, but you know, I think that the, the board is trying to go through some gyrations here to figure out how we do it because the majority of the people want to do it for the right reason. You know, and, uh, I think you make a valid point. Um, I would not want to rush to forfeit a game, but I'm trying to find a way that, uh, tries to compel compliance. And, you know, I couldn't think of a, a thing that would compel compliance more than, okay, game over or game delayed or whatever it might be. So, but I, I hear what you're saying and I appreciate your perspective. I, I absolutely do.
I could just say something, you know, and, and Mr. Campbell, thank you for your comments. And I, and, and that he's absolutely correct with, you know, we're here for the athletes and to watch them. And I, I'm a very positive person and I will say that I'm not concerned about this being policed by our Exeter community and by people following directions. I will have a plan in place. I will communicate that to everybody. And if, if there's 250 people on that hill, um, I will make sure that, everything is in the way, the way it should be following the rules of the governor. Six feet social distance, no more than 250 people and my staff, um, you know, will be ready for that. It's obviously a very tall task, but when it comes down to what everyone's saying here is we're doing this for the athletes. And if we don't, then this can happen. I would hope that we're all going to be, uh, thinking very reasonably and wanting all of this for the kids.
Tom, I would go back to really wanting to think through how we're going to count and enforce that count. Uh, and I would also encourage some more consideration of what is a consequence in between you cancel, you know, forfeiting a game. Um, I do think that there has to be consequences for bad behavior. And those consequences ought to be geared toward those people who are behaving badly. Because we are trying to provide an opportunity for not only our kids, but our spectators, um, who, who are there legitimately.
And, and you know, I have counters like pitch counters, you could click the people coming in and workers will be on the hill to get everybody in there that's in there. And when there's 250, then it's closed off. And as from what I understand that I heard is that it's our property and if they don't comply, it's considered trespassing.
I think one of the things that I may be a little bit confused about, um, and, you know, maybe I'm missing a piece of this. But I don't think that we have resolution that the space on the hill would be treated exclusively, uh, not exclusively, as separate from the stadium. Um, I, I think that we're intimating that that's likely, but I, it's my understanding that we didn't have that guarantee either from the Department of Health or the BCI double A, I think is what the acronym is.
So, Hunter, I, I don't, uh, I'll just say this. I, from my understanding, BCA double A and PIA double A have nothing to do with, the spectators. To me, it would come down to, um, what's the definition? And maybe Dr. Minor can, say a little bit more to that is what's the definition of is the hill considered a separate venue?
Before, before we um, a follow-up to that would be, I, it was my understanding that the BCI double A is now saying that if we don't comply with the requirements around 250 max attendees in an open space, that we won't be able to participate in any of the competition that they would host. So that's, I guess, why I, I brought that up.
Yep. No problem. So, so just to clarify that, so what, what's I believe on the table for them, which is not voted on yet, is that if, and this goes back to another school district of what actions were taken on Tuesday night, is that in the stadium, if the 250 people were over that limit, that, that, possible ban of playoffs would be in, would be take action. If it's considered that outside the stadium is another 250, that could happen if we go over 250 out there as well.
Hunter, I think Mr. Katz was alluding to the, uh, getting advice from the Department of Health, I believe, around a gathering on the hill. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, right. So I, I believe that the hill would be a separate gathering from the stadium. And the question is whether that outdoor gathering of people on the hill would constitute a gathering as that term is defined under the Department of Health guidelines such that you couldn't exceed 250 there either. And that's, that's the area that isn't clear to me. And I think some direction from the Department of Health would be, would be appropriate for you before you start making decisions about how many people to allow, um, to participate on the hill.
Did we get clarity on that prior to next week's meeting?
We can, we can try. I mean, it's not easy to get responses from the Department of Health now. I mean, we can certainly, we can certainly try. I guess I have a more fundamental question. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering why we would let anybody on the hill. For, for a couple of reasons. Number one, um, we, we have the potential of live streaming it for people. We have the potential of maybe letting senior parents in under the 250. And I, and I guess what I'm concerned about is unless Mr. Legath, maybe I missed this, you're going to actually sell tickets for the hill. If I'm the 260th person and the other 300 people behind me who think we're going to be the first 250 and we all show up, you know, I, I think the police are theoretically willing to help us disperse, but I'm, I, I guess I just, you know, I don't know how many people, you know, I haven't been here for the fall. I don't know how many people the hill normally holds. Uh, I, I, I imagine it's in excess of 250. So unless you were like literally going to sell tickets, once your clicker hits 250 and there's a line of 300 people waiting to get on the hill or I just, I'm, I'm worried about two things. One, I don't want this to become a super spreader event that then prevents us from going back to in-person learning and, and potentially makes people in our community sick. And two, I don't want it to become, uh, you know, fistfight kind of a situation. I don't want people to physically be injured. You know, again, you know, I, I'm, I'm trying to understand the balance of being able to watch, you know, a live stream versus needing to be on the hill and the, and the need, especially if that need is limited to some randomized, the first 250 people that show up. Are people going to show up the night before and camp out? You know what I mean? I just don't, I don't, I'm not, and you know, I haven't been there. So maybe you guys have the answers to those questions, but those are the questions that are on, on my mind, uh, Mr. Legath. I don't know if you want to.
Yeah. I mean, it's a good point. And I, and I wasn't, uh, thinking of selling the tickets outside the stadium.
I was.
It's, it's all, it's all very valid point.
It's the only way you get management. It's the only way you get management is to sell tickets.
Yeah.
There, let me just interrupt for a second. Since I have been around for a long time, tickets were always sold over at the junior high school. There were, there was a roadblock. The only way you got in to the stadium is to come through that, that, that block blockade. You didn't come down off the bank. You didn't walk any other way. So, uh, that, that stopped a good number of years ago, but tickets were always sold there.
I, I think given the numbers that we're talking about, we're reducing from thousands to hundreds. There ought to be no question before Thursday night, whether or not I'm going to be going to a game the next night. Uh, even to the point of selling tickets for a, for a season. Like let's, let's lay it out because otherwise you're going to have lines and you're going to have competition for those sales, no matter when they occur. And I don't mean by season like, but selling tickets for multiple games with the, you know, plan that, all right, we're going to have a hierarchy. We're going to allow you to get to a game or as many as we can.
It, it would be my impression though, that we don't have in, infrastructure right now that could support that. And we would have to either acquire that or set that up. Is it, is that a fair impression?
Of selling tickets on the hill?
Of selling tickets anywhere on the campus.
I mean, that's something that we already have set up blockades and we've have done that at football games where no one's allowed to park up there. And if they park, they have to park in a parking space at the junior high and walk over to the hill. Um, so in the last, you know, yeah, I mean, we, it very easily can be done to sell tickets.
Yeah, but I think what Mr. Aaron, I think what you're getting at is like the physical event of selling a ticket, which would require a gathering of people if we're doing it in a traditional person-to-person transaction. And yeah, it would, it would require a change in that respect. We've, we're right. We've never had to sell tickets really before an event, other than at the event. I, I believe in Mr. Hasley, maybe I'm misunderstanding some of the past there, but, uh, yeah, and we would need to develop some sort of hierarchy of who gets tickets first. Going back to our seniors and our senior parents and that sort of thing. And then you're right. I, I, I don't have an answer for you right now about how that actual transaction is going to occur. We're not.
I think it'd be an unfair expectation that you would have that at this point. I, I'm not suggesting that. I thought what you were more getting at would be the digital purchase and reservation of tickets. And that's what my concern was more oriented towards. Cause I think blockading, you know, there are some challenges there, but that, that's workable. But in terms of selling tickets online or reserving spots online, you know, I think that would be an administrative task that we need to undertake to set that up before we can even do that.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, I think a couple of things. I mean, first of all, you're right, Mr. Campbell, those tickets ought to be sold in, in people's hands before the game. We're not doing walk-ups. That make any sense? I happen to believe again, if we'll just stick with football for a second, given the limited capacity, whether it's within the facility or outside the facility, when I look at our senior band members or senior pep band, when I look at the participants in the game, my guess is the majority of those people who are going to attend the game, that meet those requirements, have a child who is involved in some aspect of the game. So it's really going to be people who are known to boosters, whether it's, you know, the music boosters, the football boosters or, or whatever. I mean, I think we're, we're not dealing with the public. We're dealing with people who we know, who we have relationships with and should give us some modicum, some modicum of control here because we, we have those relationships. I mean, I'm not, I'm not suggesting at all that we have some sort of a walk-up first come, first served basis. We can't, we can't do that.
Perhaps, perhaps that's the line. Like we've been looking for clear lines and perhaps the line is you can buy a ticket if you have a direct connection to a participant in this game. You have a, you have a vested interest in this game as a spectator. And that may give us a better sense of numbers and may limit. I mean, we have a lot of people that show up because it's entertainment. I don't think we have an obligation to entertain people. We have an obligation to provide our athletes a place to, to play and our, and to the degree that we can, our parents, parents of those athletes, a chance to see their kids.
Could I ask, um, and maybe this was alluded to before. And I think we're only talking about fall sports at this point. But other than football and then later games for soccer, are there any other sports that we'd be concerned about going over 250 participants in one game early on in the season?
No.
Nope.
Okay. Um, is it likely that soccer is going to have 250 participants early on in their season unless they become successful?
In normal circumstances, a Wilson Exeter matchup or Governor Mifflin Wilson, uh, Exeter could, could draw that. Uh, but looking back at some of our numbers and ticket sales, I would have to say, I would have, no.
Cause in my mind, um, cause what, what I, and, and I think the, the second gentleman who made the public comment was outlining a very challenging task, uh, to start organizing all of those. I think it was 10 points or more. And I'm not, I'm not confident that we can do that repeatedly for every single game and have the, the headache or heartache associated with that type of preparation. So I'm just wondering if we should be narrowing our focus right now to how do we accommodate the football games? Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Aaron. I didn't mean to cut you off. Were you finished?
Yeah, I'm good.
Can I ask another question, Mr. Legath? Because we're talking about outdoor sports. I think you referenced volleyball that just the players alone, there would be zero spectators. I imagine there are senior volleyball players, their parents will not get to watch anything. You know, is there any concern or thought that we're giving some kind of preferential, uh, you know, parental? Uh, you know, parental consideration for, you know, these, these sports like football versus a sport like volleyball in terms of trying to make other accommodations? Is that a concern? Is there, are there typical these spectators at volleyball or is that like a non-spectator event at Exeter?
Well, uh, so we're, we're uh outstanding in volleyball at Exeter. So we have, we draw, we draw a very large crowd. And yes, and that's, and that's where like, that's for us, like, given, you know, Mr. Strauss's comment, we have a big gym and we can accommodate, but under the governor's orders, which is what we're following, it says twenty-five. So
Yeah.
we are like every other um school in the state of Pennsylvania with following that to where you have a varsity and a JV volleyball team. A- and like right now, so, so like just for example, so while the JV team is playing the other JV team in the gym, our varsity team has to be in another area of our school as does the opposing varsity team as well. So, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a huge concern and, and I will, you know, credit our volleyball parents. They've been wonderful and and I don't want to bring up agenda two yet, but I will say like, we have in place a live streaming um, system setup for every inside volleyball match and, and event in the stadium. For parents.
Mr. Glitt. Tom, just two questions. I mean, first of all, to get back to Dr. Miner's question, I mean, if somebody was going to sue us over that, the first defendant in that lawsuit would be Governor Wolf. Uh, because all we're doing is complying with his uh regulations. So um, you know, that, that's all we're doing. We're trying to, you know, create the best standard that we can in compliance with the governor's rules. Um, Tom, what is the role of the boosters? Um, would they play in helping us? You know, majority of the people who serve in a booster capacity have a a child who's involved in some sort of associate activity associated with that event. Um, what, what, what role would they have in helping us to manage whatever we need help managing?
Um, yeah, it's, it's a good question. I mean, there's, there's, there could be different things that they could help with. I know that what my idea is, is I'm looking for them to help with, with tickets and vouchers. Like we said about not making this available to the general public. So if we have, um, you know, fifty open seats, as I would give fifty tickets to one of those respective booster clubs and they would distribute the tickets to um their parents. Um, but again, working under right now, not having any concessions and just getting game personnel in. Um, you know, you're, you're down to each number uh to get inside twenty-five, outside two fifty. It, it, it creates a lot of conflict.
Okay.
Is there any type of agreement among the Berks County School Districts or beyond about how many spectators would be coming from the other schools, if any?
So what's being talked about is, and this is mainly for boys and girls soccer and field hockey only in a stadium is a set number. So if we just, if we say a hundred um kids would, uh, fifty and fifty would be on each team on the field. Given some game workers, let's say there's a hundred and fifty tickets left over. Um, that would be split like sixty, forty, based on sixty for the home and forty for the away. And that's where the tickets come in that I would give to the opposing school district that they would hand out, obviously marked date my initials. So when they come that they can't get in unless they have that ticket.
Uh, you know, I think, I, I think something that, that is also important and, and I've kind of heard comments sort of on both sides and just I guess so we're kind of on the same page. We, we've talked a little bit about, you know, because we have larger facilities, should we expand or look at the numbers more broadly? Or should we stick with the guidelines? And I just wanted to, you know, state that, you know, from my perspective, you know, regardless of whether or not we agree with twenty-five and two fifty, you know, whether or not, you know, folks think that's reasonable or not reasonable. You know, the, you know, if those are the governor's guidelines and that's what's out there, then I think we need to stick with two fifty and twenty-five. Um, you know, until a time is when that changes and then work within those parameters. You know, we've got lots of smart people on this call to, to figure out, you know, how we can make that most equitable. You know, the other thing that I think is really interesting is, you know, as somebody who's, you know, a huge fan of sports, you know, I, I think it's somewhat fascinating that collegiate sports and professional sports are doing no spectators whatsoever. They have a much greater infrastructure. They have a much larger capacity to pre-sell tickets, you know, police spectators and all of that, and they're not. And I just think that's an interesting perspective that's out there because those are the next levels of athletics that, that, you know, athletes aspire to. And so I just think those are, you know, a couple of thoughts that I think are important to this discussion. I just wanted to share that.
Uh, I, I, I think athletes might aspire to that, but the majority of athletes never play beyond high school. And I think that's what's sort of playing out here. Um, furthermore, I don't think anybody's had an ID on this phone call that we would work outside the governor's uh, direction at this point unless HBSB twenty, HB twenty-seven eighty-seven comes into play.
Okay, I, yeah, I was just checking.
But I, I thought what Patrick was kind of alluding to was our, you know, frustration maybe with where our indoor sports stand. Cause I think we, we recognize that we have more capacity than maybe we're being given credit for. But I think what Patrick, what I heard you saying was it is what it is. I, I don't know what we can do about it. Is it really worth a whole lot of time beating around ideas about something that can't be because the state is telling us that it can't be? And I, that, that's what I understood what you were saying, Patrick.
Yes, that's correct.
May I just ask for a clarification? Because at the beginning of this call, we talked about um the fact that there's this bill in the House and that the governor will veto and that there may be a veto-proof majority. And so, you know, potentially in the next, you know, days or weeks that could play out. Mr. Katz, does that fundamentally, that school code change, change this conversation? Does that in fact then allow us to have thousands of people in our stadium, to have a hundred people in the volleyball? Like ultimately, is this conversation just a moot point? Because if that happens, we can do whatever we want?
Well, th- there's still the possibility that the um limits placed by the Department of Health and the governor, i.e. twenty-five indoor, two fifty outdoor, um, could remain as a matter of public health. So that they may still conclude regardless of the fact that the legislation would give the district the authority uh, to do whatever it wants regarding spectators. Um, they may still, they, the Department of Health and the governor's office may still conclude as a matter of public health policy that there still should be a limit on the number of people who can attend. That would put you in a, in a bit of a dilemma because you would have the authority to exceed the number. But if you would, and there was an outbreak, um, then the argument could be made if there was going to be a lawsuit that you exceeded the numbers that were set established as a matter of public health policy. So it doesn't, it doesn't completely moot this whole conversation, uh, depending on what the governor and the Department of Health may do with their public health uh perspective on these types of activities.
And then just to follow up, in your opinion, would that create personal liability for board members and administrators in that, in that event?
Um, that's why you're our attorney, Ellis.
Yeah.
You, you rep, you represent us.
Yeah, um, I, I mean, number one, it would depend on the type of lawsuit that would, would get filed because uh if it was a negligence lawsuit, um, then I think generally speaking, you would have immunity. Um, depending on the circumstances, there, there's an outside chance that somebody could try to file a civil rights lawsuit of some sort alleging some sort of um substantive due process violation and assert individual liability. I, even in that scenario, which I think would be a stretch, I don't really see individual liability. Um, again, obviously the facts would ultimately bear out what happens, but as a general proposition, I don't, I wouldn't see individual liability as a
Like collective liability for the district might be a possibility?
Yes, yes.
I think there's collective liability in anything we do when I look at the lawsuits or the illegal issues that we deal with on an annual basis. So um, it sounds, you know, I mean, that's, that's a threat, but it's a threat in anything we do. I think that's why we have an attorney here to help us to figure out what those risks are and to manage them.
So from my, my thinking and, and maybe, maybe there's somebody who wants to disagree with me, but our immediate um task as far as I think, and, and maybe I'm skipping ahead a couple of steps from, from building consensus here, so I apologize. But our immediate task would be to figure out how we're going to manage football games primarily. And then we need to be able to use that as some of our outdoor competitive sports uh maybe become more competitive over time. I, you know, soccer is probably the number one in my mind, but I don't from just my understanding, don't see the same problem with field hockey. Uh, and I apologize because I can't name all the other fall sports off the top of my head. But I would think that football is our most immediate challenge. How do we handle that on a Friday night at the home game at, at the stadium?
Totally agree, Hunter. I think that's spot on and you know, Tom, I mean, we, we can get into the details now or we can ask you to, you know, get back to us over the next few days with, with a more definitive spelled out plan.
Yeah, I have, I have ideas in my head that I could talk about now, but again, as, as uh, I think, you know, things that are always ever changing. And I, I know from the BCIA double A stance standpoint, there's going to be a survey coming out. Um, that will be determined where we're at on Monday, but I can definitely have something, uh, a plan in place for you by Tuesday. Uh, your board meeting of, of what the actions would be.
Hi, yeah, cannot, hi everyone. I'm sorry, I've been joining late, but I've been trying to listen as I've um been running around. Um, one thing I wanted to bring up is the thought of like the hill. I've heard that cool conversation. And my thought is about selling the tickets to our students. Um, these are their friends. This is their Friday night. This is what they look forward to. Um, I'm thinking, you know, having security, Mr. Campbell on the hill, those are people that they know and they're used to following directions from. Um, and I'm also thinking about, you know, having them sign waivers when they purchase their tickets. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I thought that would be a controlled group. I don't know, not maybe necessarily controlled, but like a group that we could say, this is who we're going to sell first to. We're going to sell first to seniors. And if we have enough tickets, then we'll open it to juniors or sophomores. Um, that was just my consideration for the hill. So.
I do actually, real quick to build off your, your point, Alice, and I really do like the idea of creating some type of, I don't know, waiver is the same word that I'm thinking, but something that says to the effect of, I understand the expectation that is associated with attending one of these games and it requires me to follow social distancing guidelines, wear masks, et cetera, and, and put that initial personal responsibility on each person and require them to sign that in order to buy a ticket. Now, I'm not sure of all the logistics that would go along with that. I'm sure Ellis probably would have concerns about the way it would be written. Um, but I, I think that there, there could be some error to that, even if it's more um uh symbolic rather than enforceable. But you know, I think we already have an enforcement, you know, a, a police enforcement ability in that we can eject people from the property, which I don't think we want to get to if we don't have to. Um, but I, I just wonder if that would be a, a good thing that we can try doing.
I have a thought.
They're great ideas.
I have a thought, Mike, um, Dave Hamburger. Um, there's a lot that we're going to be trying to manage and I think adding the hill to especially this first, you know, football game that we have really may be more than we're prepared to really accommodate. And I'm, I'm just wondering whether we take this more incrementally. You know, and the very first game, we sort of go in a little bit more conservatively and start off with, you know, simply the spectators, you know, in the stadium. You know, um, rope off the other areas and, and, and see how that, you know, kind of works out and, and assess you know, the success of that. And then if it's, if it works well and we have a better sense of what the turnout might, might be, whether we could take that next step at a subsequent game or games and, and move into a, you know, an option for the hill if we, if we really felt that we had some management or, you know, proper control over the whole process.
Dave, I, I think that's fair. I mean, my, here's my thinking. We have a game and then we have three weeks of out, of away games so that, you know, you, you, you kind of did the first one as a dry run and then you have three more weeks to plan before your three final home games. Um, so you know, maybe, you know, maybe what you've, I, I, I would, I, I, I think it's a good idea. And Tom, maybe you want to look at that hill and say, okay, we can fit two fifty there, but we're only going to put a hun- or whatever that is. I, I don't know. I think Dave has a valid point. I'm just looking at our schedule and knowing that we have a game three away and then three in a row. And you know, I wish the game next Friday was just maybe a week later, so we had more time to plan. But I, I think it's, I think it's a valid suggestion.
I, I'm just really impressed, Mike. You know the schedule better than me with our hands. Um, but uh, I, I, I definitely think that, you know, what I would like to do obviously is, is work with our administrators and, and come up with a plan um to present uh to the school board if, if that would be what is needed on Tuesday night. But uh, Dr. Hamburger, you, you have a great idea and, and thank you and and Allison as well. I mean, that was, that's, that's a great idea about the students and that's, this is where these, these hard decisions uh are, are coming into play here with, with what we're given from the governor of what we have to work with. Cause the number one thing, as we all know, which has been repeated numerous times here is you, you don't want to defy the governor's orders.
If I could add to that too, I think both of those ideas were, were, were good. And one of the things that I think is important as we go back into this is that we are making sure as we're including our, our kids that we are helping them model the behaviors that they're ultimately going to be using when they come back into the building. Um, and the other piece that I, I think we often forget about now is kind of that user experience. Our kids, if you watch them in the student section in any prior year, they are packed in there and they love it. And I am curious how they will experience a game standing six feet apart, which means twelve feet from the person two feet away and eighteen from three feet away. It'll be a very different user experience and I don't want to disappoint them, but I, I want them to think about that. And that may be better experienced in the stadium like, um, so I, I, I don't have a complete thought on that, but I, I do want to think ahead to how our kids are going to experience that.
I mean, I think the adaptability of our kids over the last six months uh can, you know, portrays for us the possibility that they could handle this as well.
Yes.
I agree one hundred percent with that. I, for the first night last night, had twenty cheerleaders that I was in charge of spread six feet apart constantly, wearing masks. Um, and the ability for these eight-year-old girls to listen and follow directions and do what they were told the entire time was amazing. I think our kids have adapted so quickly to, I have to wear a mask, I have to stay apart, I can't touch my friends. They got, they understand. So I'm going to throw that out there.
So I, I know, I mean, this has gone on. Uh, I appreciate the conversation. I know that you know, another big component of this and that most folks have raised it on the phone call is how do we make our events um accessible to people who couldn't or don't want to be in person. There's a, a huge audience of people that, you know, don't want to be uh in, in person somewhere, but still like to participate. So Tom, can we, if we're okay, can we shift to the streaming?
Absolutely.
Uh, YouTube uh product and talk about that?
Yep. So, so this one, this one's pretty quick and I want to give uh uh all the accolades to the IT department, Joe Way, uh, for doing research for me on, on this product and uh researched a couple of different things and what, what Joe recommended to me, which I agree with, is that we do YouTube Live, which is what we're doing now. Um, that can be streamed. We purchased um iPads for that and, and games within that parents really can't, going back to some of the other things like junior high girls volleyball, high school girls volleyball in the stadium. Um, with, with what we have in our confines. Um, I'm working with a, one of our high school um video teachers, Mr. Farrell, and he's going to actually have some of our students be the ones that are filming um this live stream YouTube. Um, and also with Mr. Campbell in coordination for their class. Um, so it's something that I'm working with him uh to, to get, we're, we have a meeting on, on Monday at eleven o'clock in, in the stadium, Mr. Farrell and I. And uh, what my, what my hope is, is that we could possibly test this out. Uh, the YouTube uh streaming at our boys soccer scrimmage on Tuesday night against Solanco uh in our stadium to, you know, just see that everything works. But um, you know, as you guys know, our IT department's wonderful, Mr. Way's wonderful, and I have no issues with, with what we're going to roll out. Um, and it goes back to uh before when we wanted to make sure uh before I say June. Uh, before I say June, when we wanted to make sure we had contests ready, of, of, readily, readily available for. Parents to be able to watch, um, and because our outside venues at Reifted and Junior Hot Herbine and, and junior high. Um, football down below, I don't feel will, will come close to the two fifty capacity to be outside. Um, that we're offering this for people to view online.
So maybe we can get a preview at some point just to see what it looks like. I was at the water polo parent meeting last night and. Got quite a kick out of the new water polo coach explaining how this was going to, uh, occur. He had a nice take on it. So, and, and you know, that's important for that group, right? Because, um, none of those games are at home this year. Uh, and none of those, none of us who have, uh, seniors will be able to see our child play. Um, in a game this year. So, um, having some way of, um, um, seeing that. Even if it's, it's not going to be, you know, television quality, I get it. Um, but it would be kind of cool to sort of tune in and, and you know, the other thing I think people should understand, I don't know if, um. I don't think football's doing this, but there've been some significant rule changes in a number of the games to, um. You know, minimize the, you know, actions of people together. I mean, water polo has reduced the. A number of players on the team, the, the number of minutes in a pool. I mean, there's a whole bunch of, um, uh. Rule changes that are, you know, being implemented to try to again, you know, uh, minimize the, uh, exposure. I mean, nothing here is risk free. Uh, we all understand that. Um, and I just appreciate, I mean, I think we're, we're done here unless it's other, oh, Tom, I did have one other question. I'm sorry. The question that was raised to me had to do with, um, the activity fee this year. Um, has there been, is there an update on that? I mean, or I'm not sure what we're doing with that or.
Right now, we are waiting, uh, to see it, I believe, how long the seasons are able to progress, uh, before we start. Charging billing for the activity fee payment. Mr. Campbell, if I'm, am I accurate there?
That's, that's my understanding.
Okay. All right, well, um, you know, that, uh, concludes, uh, this, uh, Athletics Committee meeting. There is. Uh, an executive session following this meeting for school board members. Um, and I thank everybody for their participation, for Dr. Quigley and, uh, Mr. Strauss. Uh, for their letters, for the board, for the administration, for, uh, uh, Mr. Katz, I'm trying to see who else. Mr. Hadley, Mr. Hadley has been involved with the Athletics Committee for a long time. Don is also our golf coach. Um, is, is passionate about the school district, uh, and I'm deeply appreciative of what he does on our behalf and, um. You know, thank you, Don, for all that you do. You've been here a long time.
Thank you.
Uh, and, um.
Say longer than some of the dirt. And I taught some people on this, uh, I've known some of these people since they were just small children, one of these pictures.
Well, thank you for your participation. I really appreciate it, Don. And with that, we're going to close out and we'll all, uh, move on to the next session. Thank you.
That was, that was extremely well veiled, uh, that you've known some of the people on the call since they were small. Very, very, very veiled.
Tom, you want to fill the stream there?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't do that.